I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please stand and identify yourself for the record now by stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. Uh, let's see, so, oh, yeah, sure. Madam Clerk, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Counselor Dina Tally, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Van Hassinger.
Here.
Counselor Walsh, President Zerella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
President.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Cragan.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Okay, that's eight here, three are absent.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, for public forum, we have several people signed up and several on Zoom, or one on Zoom. As is my custom, I'll go with Zoom first, just so they don't get missed. Ms. Christine Yadlon, I'm going to give you mic permissions. If you could unmute yourself and identify the agenda item on which you wish to speak, you may speak on that item for not more than two minutes.
Hi, this is Christine Yadlon, 351 Catholic Street. I am totally against the solar farm on Shea Street. I feel that the neighborhood has nothing to benefit from this whole situation, and all my neighbors are totally against it, and we appreciate any support we can get to turn the whole solar farm down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have, in the audience, Clayton Raymond.
My name's Clayton Raymond. I'm a longtime City of Pittsburgh resident, and I would just like to speak on behalf of the agenda item 272-23 regarding the zoning change for solar arrays. I am in favor of Counselor Kuchar's and Counselor Fleming's proposed changes, and I also am in favor of a temporary or moratorium outlined in item 098-24. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Charlene Laxo.
Good evening, I'm Charlene Laxo, 31 Gloria Ave, and as a member of the Shea Street Neighborhood Association, I would like to speak in support of petition 272-23. This petition provides the opportunity to review and strengthen the city's solar ordinance in order to guide solar development towards appropriate locations within the city and provide additional protections for areas impacted by proposed solar arrays. Mass General Law prohibits unreasonable restriction of solar development. However, the city has a responsibility to promote responsible siting, construction, and maintenance of large-scale solar arrays. Some ways to achieve this are to require more stringent storm drainage calculations, visual noise, wildlife, and environmental impacts assessments, expanded safety and environmental standards, and mitigation efforts to offset the clearcutting of trees. A temporary solar development moratorium would be helpful by allowing sufficient time to plan and address the effects of large solar arrays within the limits of the law. The ordinance must also consider the interest of all parties. It needs to strike a balance between the rights of property owners to use their land and the rights of abutting and neighboring property owners to live without adverse impacts caused by industrial-scale solar arrays. The increasing number of these large installations is changing the character of our neighborhoods and city. I ask that you please vote to support this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jamie Wagner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Wagner. I live at 58 Pepper Road in Pittsburgh. I am speaking on the petition 272-23 as well as 098-24, the moratorium. I had spoken last week, so I don't, um, we have some new people here, but basically, I'm more on the side of a family and just living in a neighborhood. I forgot your name back then, I apologize, but she got more into the specifics of the environment and drainage and what's necessary, but today I want to give it a more personal touch and just a little bit more about the neighborhood that this is going to be going into. I moved to Pittsburgh because it was a great location next to Route 2, has, you know, a city, living in a city with a country feel. There's only a handful of neighborhoods like that in this area and in Pittsburgh, so I think putting up a solar array in a neighborhood is just counterintuitive to the neighborhood, you know, just the fabric of just the neighborhood. It just, living next to a solar array, it just, it doesn't serve anybody except a handful of people. And lastly, I just would like you to consider, you know, you living in an area and someone putting a solar array in your backyard when, you know, it's just not what it should be in a forested area. So, yeah, that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who missed the sign-up sheet? All right, either of you may approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and you'll have your two minutes.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for allowing me to speak in this forum tonight. My name is David Normandin. I live on Pepper Road in Pittsburgh. I am here in favor of the petition to initiate a temporary moratorium of the large-scale moratorium petition number 9824. I'm also here in favor of the zoning change petition, which is 272-23. I stand here with members of our Shea Street Neighborhood Group. Our group came together when we found out our neighbors, Oak Hill Country Club, were going to lease and clearcut a huge swath of trees that cover the big hill that a butts high neighborhood. Aside from the obvious aesthetics, we were concerned about the potential water runoff, which has been bad to very bad, even with all those trees and the underbrush growing. This water runoff ends up in Lemonster's No Town Reservoir. There's an amazing cross-section of wildlife, from deer, turkey, and even bald eagles have been spotted. I lived on Pepper for eight years, and I love our neighborhood. Some of my neighbors have been here for 40 years or more, and the changes the solar field would bring to our neighborhood, including evaluations, could be devastating. I'd like to personally thank Councilors Kuchar and Fleming for the support they have given us in our efforts to have a say in what happens where we live. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Warren Tuscola, 32 Gloria Ave in Pittsburgh, and my comments pertain to petitions 272-23 and 098-24. Thank you, city councilors, for taking the time to listen to our concerns regarding the siting of industrial solar farms in Pittsburgh. Your interest in this cause motivates us, the public, in our opposition to locating solar installations at locations that are detrimental to our neighborhoods. We need to protect the city from the predatory actions of the developers of these large-scale solar farms. The Commonwealth Dover Amendment originally passed to protect public and religious institutions from discrimination when they were siting facilities. It's being misused as a money-making loophole for big businesses. This certainly was not the intention of the amendment when it was first introduced. The developers, and in some cases, the landowners, have no intention of becoming involved in our community. We do not want to lose families in our neighborhood. As a resident stated in public comments at another meeting, he and his family will move if this proposal comes to fruition. We need a temporary halt to all proposed solar projects in the city to give Pittsburgh officials and citizens time to craft an ordinance that protects our neighborhoods, forests, wildlife, wetlands, and addresses issues with stormwater. A number of Massachusetts communities have ordinances in place that could apply to us as well. We can draw on these to help us in developing solar farm restrictions for the health, safety, and welfare of Pittsburgh. Our elected and appointed officials need to work together with the public to protect the integrity of our city from the thoughtless industrial solar farms that benefit no one who lives in Pittsburgh, only the companies and possibly the landowners. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if that is, if there's no one else wishing, oh, come on up.
Hi, my name is Christine Breton. I live on Shea Street. I've lived there practically my whole life, so I grew up in that neighborhood, worked in the city of Pittsburgh. Anyway, I just want to say I am online. I would like you to pass the zoning petition 272-23 and the solar moratorium, moratorium 098-24. I was going to say more, but they more or less said it all, so rather than repeat it, just want to say that I want you to pass that if you can, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on to our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, April 18th, from 4 until 5:30 in room 205 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate this meeting. Join the Pittsburgh Health Department, Pittsburgh Interagency Team, and Mayor Sam Skwalia as the city of Pittsburgh proclaims May Mental Health Awareness Month, Tuesday, May 7th, at 1:00 PM, City Hall Lobby, 718 Main Street. The public is welcome to attend, and refreshments will be served. All are invited to wear green in support, and a variety of state and local resources specific to mental health will be available from local agencies. Representatives from the Mass Department of Mental Health, Compass Clubhouse, or Pittsburgh Outreach will be in City Hall, in the City Hall Lobby, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, from May 7th through May 10th, to answer questions and provide resources to the public. For more information, call 978-829-1854. The Pittsburgh Health Department and Pittsburgh Police Department are again hosting National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. We offer a safe, convenient, and anonymous way to dispose of unused prescription drugs and get them out of circulation, preventing possible addiction and/or overdose. This is Saturday, April 27th, 2024, from 10:00 AM through 12:00 noon at the Legislative Building here, 700 Main Street. You may drive up and drop off. Narcan and substance use disorder information will also be available. For more information, call 978-829-1854. There will be two events held to commemorate Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day on April 24th. Sorry, the Remembrance Day is April 24th. The two events will be Friday, April 19th, at 11:00 AM. There will be a raising of the Armenian flag at City Hall, 700 Main Street, Pittsburgh, just out there, followed by a brief reception in the East Meeting Room with Armenian-style refreshments. It's free and all are welcome, and you can email Counselor Cragan, scragan@fitchburgma.gov for more information. Then on Sunday, April 21st, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, there will be an Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day Poetry and Storytelling Event at the Lemonster Public Library. Join us to celebrate the art and culture of the Armenian people. Well, they will honor their ancestors by commemorating the 1915 genocide and share stories and poems. Light Armenian-style refreshments will be provided. This will be hosted by, again, Counselor Cragan, Christopher Tigrean Cragan Warner, and George And the Second Chance Animal Services vaccinated 102 pets at last Saturday's event, 58 dogs and 44 cats, which is a new record for cats, and more than half of these pets came from Pittsburgh. So, thank you to the Pittsburgh Fire Department for hosting and to the organizers and workers at that event. And lastly, we have one special presentation this evening, and I'll turn this over to Counselor Cragan.
Oh, okay, well, I'll just-
Who has the goods.
I do have the goods. So, we have, we have an extraordinary person in our midst tonight. Our city clerk, Joanna, has achieved something that I sure couldn't, which is, can you say the title exactly that you have?
TMC, which stands for Certified Municipal Clerk.
Joanna has become a certified municipal clerk, and when she just let us know in her very typically modest way, my response was, "That sounds like it should come with a sash and a crown." And she just wrote back, "I wish." Well, Joanna, Betsy's going to help me out here. We have a presentation. If you would, if you would stand. This is the first time we've ever done this.
I've done it quite often. Thank you also very much. Thank you. Also very, very much.
And thank you.
And I've been enrolled in the MMC, which is the Masters Municipal Clerk, so that'll be another two-year program.
So, if we can get you with your flower, I just wanted to, again, thank you for letting us do this. Hold on.
Be queen white, be queen white.
Oh, thank you, Joanna. Congratulations. Thank you.
I've said it before, and I'll say it again, you make my job so much easier.
Well, you're very wonderful to work with as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before you start the announces, I get one, I should have told you early, but I just found out today, late today, Ward 2 and 3's cleanup's going to be April 27th at 8:00 to 12:00 at Park Hill, at Lower Claylon.
Oh, don't tell me, tell them. All right, did everyone hear that?
I missed the date. Can we repeat the date?
The date's April 27th, between the hours of 8:00 to 12:00, Ward 2 and 3 cleanup. We could use all the help we can get, right, Mr. Kuchar?
I believe Ward 3 is May 11th.
Yeah, I think it's just Ward 2 on the list.
I think, I think- What, they changed it?
I think they split them up, which-
The mayor?
There's four, there's four-
They changed it, it was, it used to be 2 and 3.
April 20th will be Ward 4 and 5 at the High End Academy Street Lots from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. April 27th will be Daniel Street Park, a Ward 2 focus, but also it's a city cleanup, so anywhere you can go. May 4th is 44 Wunusnok Road, which is a 1 and 4 city focus. And then, May 11th is the additional Ward cleanup, which we are doing at the Stanley Park, British American Club area, so meet there, and that will be at 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
You will, yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, report of the Appointments Committee, Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We had one appointment for the Pittsburgh Board of Registers. That was asked to give a leave to withdraw, and it was, it was given.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and second to approve. Seeing no objection, it is approved. In Counselor Walsh's absence, Counselor Schultz, could you please deliver the report of the committee on records?
Certainly. The records have been examined, and they appear to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Take a motion with a second to approve it, right here.
All right, I have a motion and second. If there's no objection, it is approved. And next, we have a special presentation by the city solicitor, Lisa Mead, regarding the Twin Cities Rail Trail.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council, and I could have, actually, Amy LeBlanc, who is the project director, and Liz Murphy, of course, the executive director of community development, maybe they could come up to the table in case there are some questions for the council after I just do a brief overview.
Absolutely, always welcome.
So, since, so first of all, in your packets last week, I provided a memo, a draft order, which I'll talk about in a minute, which you're not going to act on tonight, and a, the plans, the color plans, and the reason that we gave you the color plans, I'll talk to you about in a minute, is, it's easier to see where the actual takings are coming from. But, as you know, the impacted area of this particular part of the rail trail is Railroad Street, Sawyer Passway, Main Street, and First Street, parts of those areas. So, first of all, the plans are actually at 100%. We've been working, since we, since I got appointed, my office has been working closely with Amy and Liz to take care of moving on through the next, these next steps. And so, the appraisals have all been complete for every parcel that is to be taken or impacted. The total acquisition for all of the private properties, including Unitel, is, was in your memo, it's $233,800. And so, I believe that's going to be coming from potentially a transfer within the Community Development Office, but Liz can tell you about that. The mayor has worked with us and with MART on a 99-year lease, so that the city does not have to do a taking with them, obviously, and then have to pay for that, so there's been some significant work with Amy and Liz and MART about the design of those areas and the impact and how that lease would work. Similarly, there will be a long-term lease for the MBTA areas. At this time, there's not a cost on that, it's not, certainly not part of the takings, but we'll be working on that. As far as the residents and business owners that are impacted by the takings and the construction, so on March 6th, there was a notice of taking sent out to all of them with the plans and with all of the information required by the Federal Highway Administration. Then, last week, Amy and I met with those landowners, well, we invited them in, not every one of them came in, but most of them came in.
I think all but one.
They, all but one came in, and we met with them, and we went over their individual plans and answered their questions, and we again gave them the federal, Federal Highway Administration grant, takings information, so they had that again. Next, what will happen is, right after this meeting, we'll be sending out a 30-day notice to them that says, okay, now we're really going to do this, and it also includes a thumbnail sketch of the appraisal essentially, and the value that the appraiser put on the property that's to be taken. Then after that, we'll be back in here for the actual order of taking to be done, and within 30 days of the order of taking being approved and the mayor signing it, it has to go on record, and the funds have to be made available for those individuals. And so then, we would send out notices again. Those notices of order of taking actually have to go out both to the property owners as well as any mortgage holders that might exist on those properties. So, with that, I think that it's important, Amy will point out that the state is putting in over $26 million into this project in order to do the construction, which is how this is all being facilitated, and with that, we're happy to answer any questions, I think. And if I missed anything, Amy and Liz, you should pipe in.
Anything to add before we go to questions?
Sure, I'll just speak to the financing of this. The city, in my budget, I have some encumbered funds that have been sitting for the Oliver Street paving of the, the former Central Steam Plant and, not Central Steam, sorry, former fire station and alarm building that we demolished a while ago. We had set aside some funding to pave that. We can't pave it right now, that's going to be a staging area for main and boulder work for the next two years, basically, so we're going to transfer those funds as well as some remaining funds from the main boulder conversion that we were going to use for wayfinding signage and a little bit of Mill Street improvement, so we'll be requesting that we transfer the funds from those to the purchase of the easements.
All right. Any questions? Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the purchasing of the easements, these have all been agreed to, all parties, is no one holding out?
Well, it's, there's not really, it's not really an agreement, right? So, there's orders of taking, so if they don't agree to it, then we'll know that after the order of taking. So typically, there are two ways to challenge a taking, as you both know, as you all know, there's the purpose, this is pretty clearly a public purpose, and then there's the valuation. So, you wouldn't know that until after the offer is made, which hasn't been, hasn't happened yet, but till after the offer is made, and then the taking happens, and then we send out the release, either the pro-tanto release and the regular release, to let them have the funds, and they come in and, and get the funds and sign one of those two releases, and then we would likely know.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
I did hear from a couple of, as Amy knows, a couple of residents of Railroad Street. Were they at that meeting? Did they, did they appear, Amy?
That's actually a separate portion of the project. The Phase 2 Twin Cities Rail Trail that requires takings is a separate section of Railroad Street, and it doesn't affect the same residents.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Counselor Cragan, go ahead.
This is sort of an indirect question, which is, I imagine if I lived down in that part of the patch and I had the rail trail in front of my house, as I did once upon a time when I lived in Somerville, and the rail trail that was created went pretty near where I was living, it's going to increase values. I mean, I, something that is a real amenity and something that is, you know, protected from traffic, it just seems remarkable, remarkable to me that we have something here, but my question really has to do with, because we're working with DOT, and I know that Liz, your department, has been, you know, working to kind of extend the qualifications for Mass, for downtown to be a cultural district, is this going to put us in line for anything else in the way of grants or advantages that the state may, you know, put out because we have a rail trail, because we have done this work, or is just the fact that we can do it, you know, sufficiently rewarded with the $26 million that the state is already investing?
That, that's a pretty broad question, and there, there could, I am not aware of a specific opportunity, but there could be opportunities to leverage the rail trail to do further work related to trails, to expand the trails further into the west, into the east, to do shared-use path-related work. So, I think it, it just, it checks another box for us when we're applying for community funds.
Right, thank you.
Amy, would you add anything to that?
Well, just that it really makes it a true commuter rail trail, ending at the intermodal station, and that might, there's a lot of economic development grants that, that may also tangentially apply to.
Right, it could be a point of leverage for us for other funds.
All right, if no one has any further questions, the only other thing that I would ask that we do is entertain a motion to give 09624, it's near the end of the agenda. It's near the end of the agenda, or wow, second to last page. Leave to withdraw because it was included on the agenda by mistake. It's not actually ready to take any action on yet.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. If there's no objection. All right, 09624 is withdrawn. Next, we have two communications from Her Honor, the mayor. One is a reappointment of Eric Mbunwe as a member of the Fitchburg Board of Trustees for the Public Library for a term to expire May 1st, 2027. And the other is new appointment of... One, two, three, four, five. Six full-time student police officers for the Fitchburg Police Department. I'm looking straight at the fire chief and saying, "Fire Department." There you are. Those will all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. We also have the Auditor's Report for the year ending June 30th, 2023. If there is no objection, we'll waive the reading of the report. That will be placed on file with the City Clerk's Office. There are also hyperlinks in the digital agenda if anyone is interested in perusing those. Next, we have the report of the Finance Committee. As Counselor Genitali is not with us this evening, I will deliver that report. In brief, we had three items, and all were unanimously adopted. One was $24,840 in grant funds for the purchasing of firefighter safety equipment. One was $1,900 from available funds to employee benefits health insurance. And then $322,430 from available funds to school department transportation. If anyone would like me to read those more fully, I am more than willing to.
Just on the 08924, you said you need to say $1,900,000 instead of what you said?
Yes, I'm sorry, $1,900,000, not $1,900. Thank you very much, Counselor.
You're welcome.
To accept, second? I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Finance Committee. If there is no objection, it is approved. Report of the Legislative Affairs Committee. We had four items. Zero... I'm going to take them slightly out of order. 09723 and 27023 were both simply held over again without further discussion as there's still missing information for us to act on those. 09224 pursuant to Mass. General Law 64G Section 3A to amend the local room occupancy excise to the rate of 6%. That was unanimously approved. And then 27223, Counselors Kuchar and Fleming, on behalf of all rural residential residents, to initiate solar change and zoning, introducing additional zoning to protect rural residential neighborhoods as well as excluding solar in watershed overlay and RA and R2 districts. That was unanimously approved. But I want to state for anyone who... I know everyone in the audience was... Or almost everyone in the audience was there that night. But for anyone who didn't hear that meeting, this is not an item on which the Council is yet prepared to take actual action. This is a recommendation for the investigation and drafting of some ordinance on this subject to move forward.
A move that we accept the Committee's report on 9224?
I had a quick question.
On a question on 92-24.
Okay, if it's on that, then I'm going to ask first if we have a second on the motion.
Second.
All right, and then on the motion.
On the motion, I got a question on 092-24. If I vote yes on this race for the sale... The tax room tax. Is the money going to be earmarked for a special reason, or is all this money going to go into the kitty?
This is general fund.
So we have, as a Council, has no say where it could be earmarked to?
Well, we have the same say as we have with any appropriations. We can approve or deny an appropriation that the mayor puts before us. So if any particular counselor wanted to track how much revenue we get from the room tax and then say, you know, "I want to see at least that much put towards X, and I'm going to vote against anything else," that would be up to that counselor. But at the moment, the item before us does not include any type of earmark or restriction on how those funds would be spent.
All right. No, I'm in favor of it. Don't get me wrong, because I'm asking the question. I just don't want us to put stuff in the general fund and all of a sudden say, "Wow, here we go." And we can put in and buy different other things. I don't mind raising the taxes if we know it's going to go for a reason, you know, not for the sake that we want to get more pay raises for that.
Right, so I would recommend for that, for the sake of not rehashing, if you watch the...
I was here.
Oh, right, you were, yeah. So you know why we're doing this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is going into the general fund for budgetary purposes. Certainly, nothing I've heard indicates that we're going to go on a spending spree. I wish, but... But, yeah. So I have a motion and second to approve the recommendation of the Committee as to 09224.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I amend my motion to include 9723 and 27023?
Do I still have a second on that?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee for all items excluding 27223. If there is no objection. It is approved. 27223, I know you had a motion on that, Counselor.
I would like to amend the petition. Is it... Do you want to... Would a motion to amend be appropriate, or is a motion to reject the...
A motion to amend would still be appropriate.
Right. So I would make a motion to amend the petition to eliminate the last sentence.
Second?
Which reads, "In addition, exclude solar in any watershed overlay district, nor shall any solar but any RA or R2 districts."
Would you care to elaborate?
You know, to speak on the motion, so I think it's very worthwhile to reexamine our solar ordinance and look at how we're doing things and make sure we're doing correctly, make sure we're properly accounting for stormwater that is dealt with by these panels. However, we have to be careful because we do have to comply with state law. There are requirements for the Committee about how we can restrict these. And we have to look at this carefully and make sure we're doing it correctly. And I was not at the Legislative Affairs meeting, I did watch it. There was no discussion about this specific prohibition because this last part of this petition does have a specific restrictions about where solar can or can't go. And I think it's absolutely worthwhile having those discussions about deciding whether we want to restrict it to certain areas of the city. But we didn't actually have that discussion in Legislative Affairs. And it's also worth pointing out that it proposes a restriction for a zoning district that doesn't exist in our zoning ordinance. So leaving it in place doesn't actually change anything because it does not change our bylaws. In order to have a change, we need to have specific changes proposed to our bylaws, whether it's in the zoning ordinance or our municipal bylaws. So I think it's a much better idea if we're going to go back and reexamine things and draft new ordinance language and look at what the state recommends, we keep an open mind. And if we're saying from the beginning that we're going to restrict in specific areas when we haven't actually debated or looked at, is this right? Or can we do it? Does it comply with municipal law? I don't think it's a good way to approach. So I think it's most appropriate to take that out, and we can start fresh, look, and make sure we have the best ordinance possible.
And to clarify, Counselor, would I be correct in taking what you've said to mean that you're not necessarily saying we shouldn't do these things?
No.
But simply that we should leave it out of the petition until we've had a chance to discuss the specifics further?
Yes, I would agree. I think it may be appropriate that if we can legally do so, to further restrict areas of the city in which we currently allow zoning or to allow it other places. We can... Everything is on the table. But I do think it's inappropriate to decide that now before we've had an opportunity to effectively look at how it complies with the requirements of the general law.
All right, thank you. Any comments from other counselors on that?
Regarding...
Go ahead, Counselor Cruz.
Regarding the petition or the motion to amend?
The motion to amend. All right. Given those clarifications, I'll be in support of the motion to amend simply because it's correct. We didn't take up that specific restriction at Legislative Affairs precisely because our attitude... And anyone else on the Committee, correct me. But our attitude was, we want to look into this further. We haven't decided any of the specifics yet. So I think, speaking for myself alone, if we are able to introduce those specific restrictions after having investigated it thoroughly, they certainly sound like things that would be of benefit to the city. But I think our petition going forward should include only the items that we have already been able to debate, and then we'll hash out the rest in future committees. Counselor Green?
My question would be, I guess, to the Ward Counselor, Counselor Kuchar, is if... If there's already concerns up in the Shea Street, Pepper Road, that area, Gloria Street up there, if that is already a watershed overlay district, that they're worried about this impacting. So I don't want to remove it if there's already been concerns about that being a watershed overlay already that's going to be affected.
I'll... If Counselor Kuchar would like to...
I believe it is a watershed overlay.
Mm-hmm. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Counselor Green. I don't think there's any harm in keeping it there because it's a reminder that that's something we definitely have to look at. So I don't know what the problem would be to leave it in and vote in favor of it. I understand Counselor Van Hazinga's point, but I really don't think it's going to be a problem. At least, I don't see it as a problem. Thank you.
So I would clarify that there is only one area that is subject to a watershed overlay district in our city, and it is not this area, is the northern part of the city between roughly Ringe Road West towards Ashby. That is the only watershed overlay position. So that doesn't actually have any effect on the Shea Street development. It is not located in that area.
All right. Yeah, I... I'm fine either way. Like I said, I'll support the amendment for procedural reasons rather than substantive. But, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed? One, two, three. Three in opposition, that is five to three. All right, motion carries. Matter as amended is before us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Cruz on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. At first, I want to thank everyone here tonight and the entire Shea Street Neighborhood Group for the work they've been doing. It's really been some wonderful advocacy and some terrific organizing and very much inspiring. So I thank you very much for doing this. I'm in favor of us making changes, but I have to... I have to voice some trepidations that I have about it because, as has been stated before, and as the gentleman from Ward 3 knows, this goes directly against Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 48, Section 3, Paragraph 9. It says, you know, "No zone ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy except where necessary to protect public health, safety, or welfare." So... And I want to thank the gentleman from Ward 3 because he extended my vocabulary with the word boondoggle on more than one occasion. I don't know if anybody here knows what a boondoggle is. But it's defined as a... It first appeared in a Boy Scout newspaper, if you believe it or not. But it's defined as a product that is considered a waste of both time and money and is often continued due to extraneous policy or political motivations. And I want to warn us against getting caught up in one of these boondoggles if we're going directly against Mass. General Law. So as it's already been kind of pointed out by Counselor Van Hazinga, we have a steep, steep hill to climb with this. And as it's written now, and maybe Attorney Meade, Social Media, you'd like to comment, it's far away from anything that it would need to be for us to get it passed. That's the truth. So I have serious trepidations about it as it's currently written. And I encourage the gentleman from Ward 3 to do that due diligence and get it to the language as a lawyer that it needs to be. Because I've experienced in my day job with this at the state level. We've worked a very similar legislation, and I can tell you firsthand, it is a steep, steep climb even at that level at the legislature to get past this Mass. General Law. But I'm in favor of this change. I think it's a change that needs to happen. I just think we have a lot more groundwork to do than we're currently seeing. I yield the floor, thank you.
Counselor Kuchar?
Just to my fellow counselor comments, you know, the Mass. General Law states, "Unreasonably burdens." Well, what's unreasonable? Well, that's something for us to discuss. For anything except for the public health, welfare, this is all the public health and welfare. These are all the... All these people, this is in their backyard. Of course, it's in their welfare. So I don't think it's as... I know it's a steep, steep climb. I agree with you on that one. But I don't think it's, you know, out of the question. I don't think it's as steep of a hill as you may think. But I think looking into it and looking into the case law and, you know, what has been done in the past, you know, it was discussed during the Legislative Affairs meeting, that there are areas of the Commonwealth that have restricted. You know, one resident brought up at the Legislative Affairs meeting, I believe the town of Athol, Northampton. There was a bunch of different cities and towns that have enacted legislation to protect their citizens. So if we look at what they did, we look at the case law, and we look at, you know, I think we can be able to craft something which is going to make everybody happy.
Counselor Cr... Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Cregan, who hasn't spoken yet?
Thanks. Yeah, I was really glad to see the second petition going in, and I really appreciated all of the Shea Street Neighborhood Group representatives coming and speaking on a wide variety of all the impact that will potentially happen should this be allowed. The fact is that smaller towns, smaller communities than Fitchburg have really taken this matter in hand. They have studied it, they have put forward legislation, and it all comes down to the same thing, more local control. More local control. For us not to move forward is ceding that opportunity to have that local control. And I did a bunch of background research on this after the Legislative Affairs meeting, and you see universally the same thing. Who is frustrated? The frustrated ones are the solar group, the solar companies, the National Grid and so forth, because they are not allowed to just kind of come in and do what they want. And I think that the fact that we have a neighborhood where hundreds of people live, a neighborhood that would not exist if it were to be built today because of wetlands protection and water tables and the rest of it, we are putting all of these residents at a huge disadvantage, and they're kind of the test case for this. And I'm glad that we're taking this in hand. I am not personally against solar power. In front of our house, you will not see an anti-solar power sign. You will see a, you know, "No industrial, no Luminia," name of the company at present, that is proposing this. So I'm in favor, as Counselor Kuchar has put forward, to, you know, really get on the other side of this and be proactive as these folks have done so wonderfully. I'm all set.
Thank you. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to reiterate, I'm 100% in favor of this. I think that the change to Mass. General Law was short-sighted, and I think we're kind of seeing the effects of that now, the unintended consequences. And I do have full faith that the gentleman from Ward 3 will look into that case law and the circumstances in the other municipalities and craft something that comes up that we can all agree is something that we're happy with. But I just, you know, I still need to voice the concerns to go directly against Mass. General Law. I yield the floor, thank you.
Certainly, thank you. Yes, I'm sure I can... I rarely try to speak for everyone here because normally that would be inappropriate. But I think I can say everyone here has every intention of moving forward in a way that is legal, in a way that will not get us, the city or us, in trouble with the state. That being said, I am very glad to see this... That being said, I am very glad to see this moving forward because, just to elaborate a little bit on what Counselor Cruz just said, and like I said at the Legislative Affairs meeting, when the, when this section of the Dover Amendment was adopted, a solar installation was rooftop panels. There weren't industrial-scale solar farms at the time, at least not in this neck of the woods. So in addition to doing whatever we can on our end, we all need to continue to urge the state to revisit this statute to deal with the modern realities that simply are not captured by this provision that has not, to my knowledge, been amended in any way since before the dawn of the industrial solar era. With that said, is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Passes unanimously. We have two finance orders, 09424 and 09524. If there is no objection, we'll waive reading, and those will stand referred to Finance. Seeing no objection. We already disposed of 09624. So next, we have 05124. This is a lone order in its final reading. And again, I'll ask that we waive the formal reading of the order.
So moved.
Thank you. Don't need a motion, but thank you. Unanimous, if there's no objection. All right, excellent. We, the reading is waived. Do I have a motion?
Move to be sent to its third and final reading and to be enrolled and ordained and advertised.
Second.
So this isn't an ordinance, but I'll take that as a motion to put it through its final All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cragan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero.
All right, it is unanimous. 09724 is an authorization for the mayor to enter into a land disposition agreement with the Commonwealth regarding property at 84 Elm Street. That will stand referred to city property. 09824, Counselor Kuchar on behalf of the Shea Street Neighborhood Group to initiate a temporary moratorium on large-scale solar farms until such time as zoning changes can be prepared and voted on. That will stand referred to Legislative Affairs. And 09924, Verizon New England Incorporated to request permission to place on one four, to place one four-inch conduit at the intersection of Main Street and Lunenburg Street as outlined in the enclosed petition. Can I have a motion, please, to refer that for a public hearing on May 7?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, all right, that will be set for public hearing on May 7. And that concludes our agenda for the evening.
The motion will adjourn.
I have multiple motions and a second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.